Come here.
What's that, okay?
Okay. We hadn't heard anything. So, we, I'm not gonna start until he gets here, right? Well, you can't, can't we just? The purpose of me.
What's that?
Oh, my God, that would be, you know.
I thought we were gonna discuss that. You would think. I wonder if Doug has his number? I don't think I have.
He's coming, dude.
I don't know. Do you have his number?
Yeah.
Let me see, I can. I hope not. How you doing? I hope not. Alyssa? They reached up to us.
I tried to call Steven, 'cause I know Steven Overeem got his number. We may not have one.
I would like things, especially a couple. Maybe, but Alyssa doesn't, with him, other than a, um. I just called Steven, see if he has his phone number. Steven didn't answer.
I just, Stephen or Wyatt?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be great. Oh, there Stevens is calling.
Bill.
Bill.
Hey, how you doing?
How are you doing? Got you sitting, I'm in the middle, everybody can see you.
Hello?
Hey. Hold on.
All right, so, you ready? Might as well call this meeting to order, special meeting, uh, for the purpose of, um, meeting with Representative Wyatt Gable to, uh, discuss the town of Swansboro's future needs, uh, with him. So, we'll call that meeting to order. Okay? Could we stand for the pledge of allegiance and the prayer, the prayer first? Lord Jesus, thank you so much for bringing us together today. Thank you for bringing Wyatt down here safely to listen to our needs. Let us all work together and according to your plan, and that we can do your will. In your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on its own, for God, and for this liberty and justice for all. Okay, so now I need to... How, how, how do you guys wanna handle it? You just wanna take questions, or? What's that? Okay. So, this is a little bit different, I guess. Um, Mr. Gable, um, office contacted us to do this, um, special meeting, so we really appreciate that. Um, it means a lot, because we need to have those open lines of communication. So, with that said, uh, we've got a few citizens out in the, out in the, uh, audience, and we've got our representative from the newspaper, so you gonna meet the newspaper. Um, so, let's just go ahead and proceed, I guess. What, is there anything you'd like to open up by saying?
Um, I just kinda wanted to get this meeting out there, so thank y'all for meeting with me today. Um, I know, you know, it's, there's a lot of communication that needs to go on from the city and the county and the state, 'cause we're all in this area locally. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that people know that I'm here, uh, that I exist, I'm here to help you guys, and all of you up here as well, and then kind of just to get an understanding of what the town needs for this legislative session, 'cause we had a meeting with myself, Senator Lozara, and then the other municipalities in the county, but most of them aren't really in my district. I pretty much just have Jacksonville and Swansboro, so there was a lot of talk about stuff that is outside of my district, and, you know, it wasn't really time one-on-one with the people that are actually in my district that I needed to help the most. So, that's kinda just the point of today, is kinda hear what you guys have, if you have any questions, or, uh, any concerns, or kind of what appropriations you might need for the upcoming session. And then just, uh, a forewarning, unfortunately, with everything that happened with the hurricane out on the western part of the state, most of the money that we have that's free is gonna be hard to come by this time around, you know, this session, because most of that money's gonna go to the western part of the state. We've already allocated two-hundred-and-seventy-three million dollars from the state rainy day fund, go out there, and then now we're trying to, you know, A, replenish that, but then just be able to even meet our normal budget this year, it's gonna be tough, so I just wanna make sure everyone understands that, and I'll try and do as much as I can for you.
Okay, um, so, basically, you wanna, you guys have any questions? I, I, I do too, but Doug, you can go first.
Bill, I don't wanna steal your thunder on this, but I don't know if you know, we, as a town, contributed forty thousand dollars to local charities that went out to the western part of the state, or in the function of going out there to help out these folks. So, we, even as municipality, a hundred percent agree that that should be the priority for the state right now. How, uh, that being said, at the same time, I wanna make sure that you realize that we have been allocated a certain amount for our EOC. We are very close, um, to getting that money committed and stuff. I can't tell you the details of that, because it's been a closed session. Um, but, I need your confirmation that you'll have conversations with Mr. Michael Lozara to support us, 'cause right now, I know there's been a delay, and it had nothing to do with the present board, um, and we're looking at ways to be good stewards of that taxpayer money, but at the same time, provide the biggest obligation we have to this community, which is public safety, that our municipality actually does, that we're in nu merit to do. So, it's a constitutional matter, and it's a matter of if we get, if it gets pulled back now, um, that would be devastating to the, that this town's public safety. Um, you need to be aware of our relationship with Anzo County, which is almost non-existent, um, as far as EMS coverage goes. Um, recently, this past year, since we, this board's been elected, they pulled our EMC away from our local station and put it further down the road out of town, even though we had the worst response time in all the zones for EMS around this area. Um, so, that being said, I mean, I can, we, if you wanna talk about corridor, and I'm sure it'll come up later in this conversation, but I wanna hog the microphone on you. Um, we did have an incident last year, which kind of, I don't know if you got my email I sent you, about the living assisted facility, making sure that HHS does some follow-up on this. Uh, the folks, we owe our elderly citizens respect and dignity. And I guess, a lot of things came to light because of an incident that Public Safety responded to over there. Um, and then, when that bubble burst, we had half this room filled up with people who've parents and relatives and loved ones lived there, and a whole bunch of stuff was coming to light that probably shouldn't be happening. And that's kind of what instigated all of this, okay? If I missed anything, someone can correct me and jump in any time, okay? But those are my main concerns at this.
Okay, um, I know, we had touched on that a little bit at the other meeting we had. Um, we, I don't, I might've forgotten, do we, does that have a shelf life on it, is like, when the money would run out, or is it just if it's revoked?
Um, the, the EOC money, um, it doesn't have a clear-cut date on it, that I know of, but it's, we've had it for quite a while, so we need to make use of it, in my mind, and I think the rest of the Board of Commissioners would agree with that. Um, like Doug said, we're relatively close on a piece of property, it's in the works, but it's in closed session, so we can't speak to it. Um, you know, when we had that joint meeting, uh, it was, a comment was made that kinda caught my attention, and I think it caught Mr. Barley's attention too, that we needed to go ahead and use that money. Yeah, I don't, we don't wanna lose it, so.
And to what you're saying, I can assure you, I'll, me and Senator Lozara are on the same page, we'll do as much as we can to make sure you keep that money, so don't, well, that, that kinda stuff, we all understand, 'cause as much as the western part of the state needs to be rebuilt, we need to keep stuff here to keep people safe, and we all understand that, so that, don't worry about, just, obviously, the sooner that you can get it done, the better, but we will definitely keep your money for that, so don't worry about that one, no one's taking that away. And then, um, Jimmy, you're out there? Right? Okay, uh, I, just 'cause you're here, I saw your email you sent me, and I am getting information on that, 'cause that was last session, so I wasn't really pertinent, so I didn't forget about you, I just wanna make that known, so, yeah. Anything else y'all had, or?
Yo, following on what Doug talked about, the landings, uh, Ms. Margaret Poindexter, she has a litany of, of letters correspondence been sent up to, uh, the state, and nobody has responded to that, according to her. I don't, uh, obviously, I'm not in the, in the address block, but, uh, you know, I'm really interested in why nobody is answering the mail on that to this group of citizens. Like Doug said, these people are working hard to take care of their parents, who've taken care of them for years. And, uh, it sounds like we have a corporate level decisions being made that undercut the care that these people, maybe, maybe they're, they have the exact legal medical care, but the heartfelt care that these people deserve and need is not being met by this company. And we had, uh, the Golden Voices' last meeting here, I don't know, about thirty in here, so they're, they're willing to come out, they're willing to come to your meeting this time, you know, they're just, they're that adamant about getting this answered, getting this attended to, so, you know, what, uh, you know, have folks up there scrub their archives, you know?
Uh, what was her name, sir?
Getting their deleted file, or wherever it has to be at. Poindexter, Margaret Poindexter.
We, we, we have that letter, uh, in our...
We have the letters, yes.
Yeah, we have that letter. Probably not, yeah.
I, I have it in my phone, but I didn't bring my, my phone.
I got it. I can email it to you, or Alyssa.
I just, uh, I'm getting my assistant to see if anyone's emailed me with that name, just to see if I've even gotten, 'cause I don't think I've got anything come across my desk, so if it has, I'll try and...
And, and this was probably a minute before your time.
Okay, so I, I can't speak for anyone else, just, I mean, I don't, if I haven't gotten it, I don't know about it, so.
Understand, that's why I needed to go in there and kick a couple of doors around and say, hey, where's Ms. Poindexter's letter? Uh, also to dovetail on what Doug was talking about, our EOC, uh, contrary to popular belief, the EOC that we want to build will be a protective building, establishment, whatever, to protect our police and fire equipment, fire, and house the EOC. You know, we can do the EOC down, we have a commitment to the, with the Methodist Church, we put some money into them to update their bandwidth and their internet. That houses the people, right? We also need something to house our emergency equipment, so when we have to deploy, it does no good to have the fire department there if there, if there's a tree sticking through the, the, uh, front of the truck, front of the building, into the truck. We need, this, here's a CAT one building, we need to build, raise our CAT level, so we can house our equipment, and make sure that we have equipment to use in the case of a hurricane, tornado.
Our EMS, uh, services will eventually, very soon, be part of that as well, because we had a little, uh, instance where our, um, response vehicle was taken out of our, um, EM, um, EOC building now, and so we're sitting here with that one, it's outside of townable ways, so we'd like to get it back into our service again, uh, where we would provide our own EMS, and, uh, so that'd be part of the, that's real important, especially with, um, like the instance we had the other day, who's to say that somebody with the landings, somebody could've had a heart attack, and then, of course, you got first responders there already, but, you know, advanced life support would've been, might've been, but, and it may have been, I don't know, you know, if he was always responding, I know it was multi-agencies, and a lot of people helped, including the state, because when Paul Ingram, our building inspector, reached out, they had a state inspector come down, and they were pretty timely, it seemed like to me, in, in helping us with that, so, you know, pass that along to you.
Go ahead, I, I, I gotta know when to go out there, but Jeff has been waiting.
Um, over the last few years, um, I'm getting the impression, um, by some of the Senate bills that are getting passed, that the state is attempting to pull away local municipalities' rights, uh, during rezoning, uh, during development. Um, and, and, and the thing that really bothers me the most of it is people are making decisions that don't even live here, and are not gonna live with the development. It's easy to say, oh, yeah, this is gonna be great for us, because it'll bring this many jobs, it'll do this, it'll do that, but then the after-effects that we have to deal with up here is the obvious. More police officers, more firefighters, uh, a road that's not substandard, um, the ab, uh, ability for, uh, you know, water, uh, all the basics, basically. And personally, you know, th, those local boards, we know what our infrastructure can handle. And, like the last one, Senate Bill eighty-two, three-eighty-two, you know, it's like, no, you can't town size, basically, you can't downzone. Do you see it that way, or am I missing something?
Um, well, I mean, y'all might know this, but for anyone that doesn't know, in terms of what he's talking about, like, bill-wise, so, if you have a bill that affects sixteen out of our hundred counties or more, it's just called a bill, it's a normal one, it has to get approval of the entire general, or, not the entire, but, you know, pass the House, the Senate, and then either have enough to have a supermajority in the legislature, or get approval by the governor, but if it's fifteen counties or less, it's considered a local bill, and it, those happen quite often, I know three-eighty-two wasn't a local bill, but things like that, where someone from somewhere in the state that's a legislator will take it to the Assembly, they say, hey, we wanna change this in our municipality or our county, it's affecting fifteen counties or less, so that way it doesn't need approval of the governor, so it's pretty much just, if you get half plus one in the House and the Senate, it passes. So, those are some of the things you might see around the state that just affect that area and not ours, but in terms of things like three-eighty-two, it's, I mean, I don't, I hate to say it, but it's just the politics of the people, because, you know, they get the big bill going, and then they just hide everything else in there, and personally, I don't think it should be that way, I think you should pass one thing at a time, and not push everything through and try and hide it, so, I mean, I wouldn't really be in favor of things like that, that's just my opinion on that, I just think it should be one bill at a time, so. Right. Well, you, you would love... I, I, I agree, but you, you would love the first bill that I have just put in, it's twelve lines, it's one paragraph, and it changes two words, so, that's all that first bill did, but I agree, I don't think you should be having ninety-page bills trying to hide stuff, so. Right.
Government's bad. What you gotta do is, I'll be all ready. I just asked you.
Oh, yeah?
Oh. You bought a house.
Okay. Yeah. Right.
Something to...
Yeah.
And they, they, they actually made a statement, they had expected the, the quality of service to go up, and it actually went down.
And, and services.
And services provided were cut.
So, what kind of purview you, you have over that, though, can you just take it to, really, health and human services?
Um, yeah, so...
I mean, 'cause it's gotta be hard for you to make, you know...
Yeah, technically, I mean, like, personally, me, what I can do, I technically have no power over that, but, again, I can alert the state agencies and bring them in, so if, and my assistant get back, did get back to me, she did say that, um, the, uh, excuse me, reading what she said, sorry.
And we are live streaming, so you know that.
Okay. But, no, you're fine, but, um, she said she has not emailed me yet personally, for what you were talking about, so, I just, I, that hasn't come across my desk, but, um, in terms of what you're saying, it would just be to alert the state agencies, I mean, alert.
Stay, stay...
Stay on them, 'cause we know how effective state agencies are, so I'll try and get...
We can definitely, between the four of us, maybe five of us, we can forward you those emails.
Okay.
So, just for your situational awareness.
Yeah.
You can look around the state Capitol and say, you got it, what'd you do with it? You know?
Yeah.
I, that's, that's my style, but, you know, maybe yours.
I guess, yeah, yeah.
I tell you this, Wyatt, somebody up there has a lobbyist of this company, on Jones Street.
Oh, I'm sure.
And you gotta take what we're gonna give you as evidence, and lay it on their desk, and say, until service performs, I don't, I don't expect you to be coming to me asking for anything, until you, the quality of life shows up down here for those people that are supposed to serve it.
Uh, yeah, I, uh, I have a full lobbying directory book about that thick, so I will, if you guys know, or, I'm after or now, if you tell me, what's the name of the facility here?
The Landing.
The Landings, okay, if all, I can look through that and see if they have a representative up there, and then we can...
A L, A L, A T L? What is it, Jimmy, is it ALC, A L, A L G?
They're out of Hickory.
Okay, yeah, if, yeah, I'll, I'll see if they have a, a signed lobbyist that they pay, and then I'll be sure to ask them about that, so. And then I'll definitely be contacting HHS about that, so. Trying to see what we can do. Um, any other problems you guys had right now, or?
I got a list of things.
Well, let's hear them, come on, that's why I'm here.
Mine's mainly focused in the Swansboro proper, and just in the ETJs right on the edges, uh, our roads, obviously, and I know, and I understand fully, all the money's going out west, because their infrastructure was decimated. Um, how long do we anticipate the money's gonna keep flowing out there? Is it, is there any timeframe as to how long that will take to get them up where they need to be?
Um, not, not really, because we have a select committee in the House that is all about helene recovery, that's all it is, so they've met twice so far, so the way we're kind of doing it is we're waiting on the federal government to give us a official, like, just quote on how much damage there is out there, and then, once we get that quote, they will come in and provide federal money for it, and then whatever either is leftover that needs to be filled, or if they fill everything, and then we just wanna provide more money, we will know how much money we have to allocate for them, but there's really no timeframe. Hopefully, we've obviously seen how fast the new administration is working on things, so hopefully we'll know sooner rather than later, but there's really no true timeframe, so, um...
Yeah, I, I know it's gotta be hard to gauge, especially like, I know part of forty K back in, in the section up there and, and all, but, in the meantime, we've got roads down here, well, for instance, twenty-four, you're well aware of that, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
We've got about thirty-five to forty thousand a day come through here, we were wanting to put, um, Project Coffee, are you aware of it?
Yes, yes.
And I've got a little map here, have you seen it?
I haven't seen the map, but I know all about Project Coffee, so.
Yeah, this is how it's laid out right here, um, if my bearings on the map, this is the front, this is twenty-four. Those are going to be retails, those are going to be shops. So that's going to be a light industrial. Um, and it shouldn't create a lot of, um, runoff or a lot of traffic because there's going to be a light industrial type situation, but it will be something we need to address, and we were trying to get money for a T I A, and we couldn't get it from the state. And, uh, you know, we're still trying to explore some avenues to, to get that done, uh, we, because we don't want to delay that project. That would, I think Mark says, what, one and a half times the going rate for salaries for the projects that they do, I think. So it would give some good paying jobs to this area, um.
Yeah. Yeah, it was one, one of the things was just like increasing of quality, high-paying jobs, because again, if, uh, one of the big things I talked about with the tier list, which for people that don't know, the tier list in the county is, we have three tiers for counties in the state of North Carolina. And if you're tier one, which is what Anzlo County is, that means you are, uh, there's four criteria that they use, and the two main ones are, uh, tax rate per capita and then average household income. And our household income is on the very lower side, which you would kind of expect in a rural county, but then our tax rate is also higher, and some of that is because of the base, because, you know, they don't pay taxes, which is something we've kind of argued with the federal government with now, because they used to, but they don't anymore because of privatized housing on the base now, so that's a struggle, but things like this are definitely important to the area, so.
I'm not, no. I'm, I'm on, on, no.
Okay, great, I have talked to him, so.
Yeah, so, um, you, there's, you've talked with Joe Ed a lot, um, as well, Anthony John, about Project Coffee and how important, do you have any specific questions that you want to know, Wyatt, or, or?
Um, I think.
You just want to get together later and?
Yeah, we can get together later. I mean, like you said, I, I know all about it, I just like didn't know where and everything.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we've, I've talked about this extensively with, with y'all, with, uh, Senator Zara a little bit, and then some of the county people too, that, you know, they're just kind of telling me what was going on. So I know there's many projects like this that are going around the entire county, but obviously this is one of the most important ones because it's right here, so, um, but yeah, I'm, I'm all good on that one right now, so.
And, and of course, we're, we're looking at roads and, uh, it's kind of beating a dead horse, but I'm going to do it, do it anyway. You know, we have some really, really bad roads that need a lot of attention, just to give you awareness of them. Queens Creek Road, got two schools sitting there and another one sitting at the end of it, and it's just a horrible road and many accidents and, and calls out there for, um, for accidents, um.
And that is a town-owned road, correct?
That's a state road.
State road, okay, it is a state road.
State roads are, that we have here that really need a lot of attention in my mind, and John, please feel free to step in, is Highway twenty-four, which I don't know what in the world we can do with that, uh, Queens Creek Road, Old Hammocks Beach Road, Hammocks Beach Road, Swansboro, uh, Loop Road, and Main Street Extension, believe it or not, right out here across. Uh, I know that's earmarked, Main Street Extension's earmarked for, it starts sometime this year. So tha- that's in the works, um. I, I talked with John Barlow and John Davis, when John Davis was here with Anthony Prince, about a culvert we got out here on twenty-four, right in front of the American Legion building that's starting to cave a little bit. And we were trying to get that fixed at one time. I don't know where we're at with that right now. Do you happen to know, John? And, and I'm not trying to throw all this at you, but it's just things that are real important to this community, um. So, I, I just wanted you to be aware of.
Yeah, I know, we did, I discussed some of the road with some of the county commissioners before, but, um, and I guess, I don't want to put more work on you guys, but like if you guys that are just, you know, the general public, and if you could like relay issues maybe to them so they can always relay it to me, because I know, I mean, you could just go straight to me, but what I'll say to you is like, the things you need, if you guys could ever get like a quote for the appropriations that is needed, then I can, you know, take it to, uh, appropriation committee meeting so I can try and get us more money, or I can just go straight to the D O T and see if they have any money that's, you know, that reoccurring money that they'd like to give out, so if you guys could always just, you know, put it in number formats, and then whenever I ask for it, I can actually say, okay, this is what we need, we need it now, and not just kind of lowballing, because I'm sure they're always going to try and lowball. So just if I could always get a solid number of everything, that'd be really appreciated, so.
And I understand they get moved up. I'm on a little committee called Jumpo, it's out of Jacksonville, and it deals with the roads and all. And, um, Queens Creek was due to be addressed just a bridge on about twenty thirty, I believe it was, now it's pushed back to twenty thirty-five just for the bridge, and it's not, not, nothing against, you know, the legislature, it's just, you, you can only do what you have to work with, you know, and we understand that, but they are top of mind for us. We'd really like to get it done.
Roger.
Twenty, twenty? Twenty, twenty-five? Oh, oh, originally, I was going to say, yeah, now it's moved all the way to twenty thirty-five. It was thirty and then thirty-five. No. Um, and of course sidewalks, we, we allocated fifty, uh, five hundred thousand dollars out of our general fund for sidewalks. So any, any leftover little bits of money that y'all might could find somewhere to help us with our sidewalks, uh, would, you know, that would be great.
Uh, again, if you get, even if it's, obviously the smaller the ask, the easier it is to get, but if just, you know, the, if you can put everything in a numbers format, that'd be great.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Because then I can, I can just take it to appropriation, say, I need this, and we can go from there, so.
I won't beat that horse anymore.
You're all good. I've been hearing that one for a while, so you're all good.
Like a little dog with a bone. Um. Of course, there's things you're aware of that, that, on this meeting already. Um, Kelly, you have?
You know, I just, uh, wondering, Wyatt, that we talk about, uh, we need EMS, we need, uh, we have requirements and needs here in, in the town. When the state considers funding for, uh, local municipalities, do they consider the opportunities that the city has to support themselves prior to granting that money?
Um, yes, because, I mean, so, one of the main ways they always use to allocate money is like population and then population growth, which they obviously don't do too well, because we're obviously growing very fast around here. So them try, it's, again, it's the unfortunate reality, it's try, it's, you know, the people that are in the bigger positions up there, they always get more money for their areas, so the rest, we're trying to scramble as much as we can. But, I mean, we, we definitely, we have our municipality input, and I would love that you're, if you guys ever want to come up there and try and, you know, knock some sense into people, but.
Yeah, I, I, I attended the, uh, the Anzlo County School Board meeting yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
Where they presented a ten-year plan to the, uh, Board of Commissioners there. You know, the one word that I barely heard mentioned was the word Swansboro. What I did hear a lot was Sneed's Ferry and, uh, Holly Ridge. Sneed's Ferry, grad, fastest-growing community in Anzlo County. Guess what Sneed's Ferry is getting? They're getting a new school. Because we really, you know, while we say we're overcrowded, we're not necessarily overcrowded. You know, and I know everybody here knows what I'm talking about, you may not know, but I'm talking about the three hundred and twenty-four apartments that we are looking to push away, uh, you know, the impact of the, uh, of those apartments on our school system will be approximately sixty-seven students across all grades in the school. So it's not a huge impact, but the impact of having the, the, the tax base, the commercial, speaking to business owners here, they're telling me that that number of people, potentially six hundred adults, right, would increase the businesses that we have here. The businesses that are currently in business here would get more business, and that begets more business. So, yes, we will have, uh, uh, maybe some national brands, but maybe more mom and pop type stuff, uh, the ones that compete.
Yep.
But, so my concern is if, if we pass on, uh, the opportunity to make this money for the city, and then we go asking for the state to say, hey, we need some help with this, they're going to look at it and say, well, you had the chance, why didn't you take it? You know, and that's what, I'm getting evil, I've dug over it. I'm going to let it go. But that, that, that's just my thought, you know, and it, it is a question, you know, is, is a potential for the state to say, you know, y'all, y'all had it, but you didn't take it. We'll, we'll catch you on the next go.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong on this, John, because you probably know you, you were town manager here before, about six years ago.
Move away from the microphone just a little bit, you can't hear a word you're saying.
We're probably doubled in the last ten years.
Going. Which is good. Going. Probably go to the. Oh, fuck. How I want. Fuck. We're fracking. Probably set. Right? Higher. Hurt. Fuck. Thank you. Our. Seven. Allie. I don't know how you feel about it.
No, I don't. I'm just a pirate, so.
That's. That is like. Fuck. Um. Identity housing. Single family home. Big family.
Yep. Right.
Owning everything. Comes with the talk. Trying to call it, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Bye, Mike.
And then I know we were talking about they are getting a new school down there. Y'all may not, may not, just be a really dumb question, but have we, like, thought of where a new school, if we were to get one here, could potentially go?
One going out on Belgrade, Swansboro route, but it's a pretty good ways.
It's an elementary school.
Yep.
That adds, adds the fourth school to feed our middle school. If you go by our middle school, young Bill here said it was here when he was in school, right? Uh, they did talk about doing some, uh, upgrades and repairs, but it's already a patchwork quilt up there. I'm, I'm telling you, that school needs to be raised and a new school put there. Uh, you know, I, do I know the answer to that? No, but we need a different middle school, a new middle school.
Would that be more county, though?
I mean, the, like, money for a new school or like repairs of a school?
New school, right?
They're, they're, they were talking about repairing a school, but like I say, that school, how old, estimate, Bill, how old are you? No, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, seventy-two, and he was there, it was there when he was going to school, so it's old, uh.
I mean, I.
I don't know that repairing it, you know, or refurbishing it is the right answer, you know, not unless you, you know, it's one of those things where you, you take it down to the studs and rebuild it.
Yeah.
You know, uh, that's generally more expensive than raising it, building it.
Um, going back to what you said, uh, I mean, for stuff like repairs, that would probably just come straight from the county, depending on how much, but I mean, a new school, that would have to have state funding. I don't think the county school board would have enough money to do that.
They, they said they have a forty million dollar account for this, but when you start building, get, I don't know, two schools, three schools, you don't have forty million in it.
Yeah, no, forty million gets quick nowadays, so.
It'll go up real quick, uh, you know, the, and again, we are not seen as a, a fast-paced, fast-growing community, so we get overlooked when it comes to school now.
Yep.
Uh, here regardless of how many kids we have in our school system right now, we have a lot of people in E T J that come to our school. Uh, it, it's, we, we're, we're paying the bills, we're doing a lot for everybody around us. Uh, we've got to find a way. More input to the county, more, we got to get more from the county.
Gotcha. Yeah. Yeah. Anyone has any questions out there that like to ask?
Yeah, if anybody in the, Jeff, you got anything else you want to?
Yeah, I, I'm just here for you guys, so if you want to ask me anything, that's why I'm here.
So if anybody in the audience would like to come up and ask, uh, Mr. Gable any questions, I mean, he's more than happy to, he's been very accessible.
We have a Chamber of Commerce here today, and Jimmy?
Uh, I have, uh, business cards up here too that have my office number, my off, office email, and my office address, so if you ever need to get in touch with me, I've got these up here too, if anyone wants one, like.
Yep, everybody here wants one.
Yep.
Yes. Want to make sure you get Miss Point Dexter's.
Okay. I mean, first off, I've heard of it, so, no one else brought that to my attention, so what you're saying is like, when you say a public notice, could you like give some examples, please? So is the current law that it just has to be published anywhere, or is it still currently has to be printed? I mean, from what you're telling me, I'd probably say keep it printed, because I understand not everyone has access to the internet at all times. So from that point, I'd say I'm probably with you on that one, so. Um, or you don't.
Well, I wasn't alive in nineteen ninety-six, so, you know, but, but I remember everyone telling me about it.
They actually had greater impacts in the Fayetteville area and the central part of the state, just west of ninety-five, than they had here. Um, another thing we try to do along the coast here, our municipalities, just so you're educated in this, we have a fund balance, kinda like you might say a rainy day fund, that we try to keep at a certain level, and this board passed a resolution this year of minimum fund balance that we'll maintain or maximum that we'll maintain for that rainy day to try to help you guys out at the legislature level up there. What that money does is, before the relief money comes in, we use that to that first response after the storm, um, to thi- to things that we didn't budget for that year, obviously, when a disaster happens. Um, so these are things that we're trying to do here at the local level as well. So, if you're not familiar with the term fund balance and municipalities and how that works, um, good idea, I mean, I know you're new to the job and stuff, probably George can probably fill you in on this, and I know my, Mr. Michael Azar can, too, but, um, I'd encourage you to learn more about that process here at municipalities, and that guy over there, really smart town manager, really runs a, does an excellent job, gives us the advice that I think we need when we need it. Um, John, I, you're a great resource for how government works across the state. You've been in, you've lived in many parts of the state, you've been a town manager as a career, so you understand these things. If you wanna know how municipalities really work, great resource of a guy to get in touch with. I, I think he can even give you some ideas on how you can better integrate with what we're doing as municipality, what the county can do. I got another advocate right there, is the county commissioner, who advocates for the same thing, integrate in the county level, and we elected him to go up there to do that. He just needs some help, I think, from you guys to kinda make that come to fruition.
I've already talked to him about one of the bills he wants to pass, so, we're already on that track, so.
Um, corridor, John, since you're here, do you wanna say anything public about the corridor plan between us, Carteret, and the Jacksonville area, and how their plan doesn't really consider, um, us as a municipality, I guess, and I'll say the word bypass. Um, that's a future long-term project, I get it, but anything you wanna say about that while you're here?
Anything else y'all have? Anybody else have any, uh, questions that they'd like to ask Kim, Jane, you, you think? Okay, yeah, stuff up, just state your name and address, please, and, and speak into the microphone.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, your name and address, please. Yep.
It's a good ride. I owe you to come down, ride with you, talked about it before, just a slug on it, sorry.
Uh, I, I would love to sometime, I can't today, I'm actually going to Pennsylvania this weekend, so I've gotta get on out later, but, uh, I appreciate it and I'll definitely take that some other time, so.
Are you a Phillies fan?
Nope.
Oh, I'll just check.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks for coming, thank you, yeah.
Okay, Jeff, you got some?
Man, I almost forgot this one. Um, I've had some, uh, folks ask me, and I told them, I said, well, this still happens on the seventh, I can ask the question. Um, we have, especially for here, we, we, we have a lot of recreational fishermen, right, come through here. Um, over the years, well, the Marine Fisheries Commission is appointed by the governor, all nine members of the board. The recreational fishermen, uh, the sale of license has dropped because of all the restrictions they're putting on recreational fishermen, whereas on the commercial side, they're just staying steady. Um, I think it's political, only because of the people involved, they're part of the commission. Um, it, you know, I, I, I don't know the numbers, how much it's hurting us here, but I do know there are some people out there, um, that are considered recreational fishermen that, that, that's how they feed their family. They'll, they'll go out at night and catch a couple fish, bring them home, feed their family. Um, but with the restrictions, they keep mounting up every year, uh, making things difficult, and I would just like to see somebody, you know, I know recently, uh, they, they just passed, uh, the auditor, I guess, appoints the board of elections, uh, they need to do the same thing with fisheries, it needs to be taken away from the governor's office and put into somebody else's hands.
I know, um, certain boards, um, I believe, don't quote me on this, I'm not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure the agriculture board is governor appoints four, then the majority leader of the house appoints four, and then, or the speaker or something like that, and I'm like the spe- the senate, president pro temp of the senate appoints four, would that be something that'd be feeling, too, where, like, the governor still appoints some, but then, like, members of the Assembly will also appoint some, would that be, like, kinda what you're talking about? Okay. I know some boards are like that, but then others, like, the board. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know, yeah, some boards are like that, like the Board of Education, that's, you know, alter governor and then the Board of Fisheries, but then other ones are the governor and the legislature, so if we can look at making that one of those, so.
Pete, you have another question? Okay. Yep, step right back up, please.
the fish population problem. It's, uh, I'm sorry, there's nothing that'll make me believe that, 'cause I know roughly about what a lot of us, I'll just say hardcore fishermen who go out every day and do, the majority of us, we catch a relief. Every once in a while, I'll bring something home if I get, if it's, if it's something I have to, so to speak, but, uh, it, i- i- it's, it's something that's long overdue for the state of North Carolina, 'cause this has been going on for a very long time. When I first got here, heck, there wasn't any limits on plow, at all, zero. Um, and now, you know, it's cut down to when the season's open, when they, you know, whenever they say the season is, and usually then, it's like one a day. Like, what fisherman's gonna put their boat and go out there for one a day? Not two men. I won't even do that. So, you gotta appreciate that being looked into, see if, at least we can change the board if that's the problem, is on, to make up a board.
Yeah, so, um, I don't think we'll be able to, we, we could, but I don't think we will, switch that one over to the auditor as well, so, but like I said, if we could look at maybe doing it like some of the other, like the agriculture board or commission where it's, you know, the agriculture chair, the, that's what it was, I just couldn't think of it, but the agriculture chair of the House and the Senate and then the governor and they kinda, I mean, that, that's a possibility.
Well, I can just guarantee you that this recreational fishermen is not affecting the level of any fish.
You gotta catch them.
You gotta catch them first.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Gable or Mr. Gable, or is there anything you'd like to say in summary, or?
Uh, no, I think we've covered everything, I'm just here if y'all need any help, so, uh, it's kinda why I just wanted to come out here, make myself known, so if you ever need anything, reach out and I'll try and help you if I can.
Anything from the county level? I know you wanna talk, you're making fun of me wanting to talk, I know it's about to kill you.
Guys, when I came straight here from working, but, uh, first Wyatt, thank you. Uh, you know I love George, but this is the first time we've had a representative come sit down with us, so thank you for coming to Swansboro, being a part of something like this, and whoever put that idea together, great job. Uh, yeah, I'm not gonna preach a whole lot, I think most of y'all know, and where I would love to have your help besides some of the other stuff we've talked about is, we, we need an integrated county plan, which you can indirectly influence, can't directly do, right? So, but these guys, I think, are buying into that, we're starting to get some buy-in at the county level, where we, you know, work with our town managers as well as the other municipalities in the area, but, um, seeing a more integrated passing the baton back and forth between all the different levels of government, I think, is really critical. And what the things that these guys are talking about with recreational fishing to Main Street Extension, to whether it's tourism dollars or grants for sidewalks, whatever it is that we're trying to do with the state, I think is critical, and we appreciate that you're here and being a part of that, and I guess, any other questions for me? I mean, yes, to your point, I didn't wanna, don't wanna dwell there, but that's part of the problem, is we're too many silos where we're not working together in this transitional space that we have called the Crystal Coast, so we need to do, all of us need to do better at that, so, but otherwise, just really appreciate it, and Bill, I think I owe you a congratulations, you and Jeff both, huh?
I, I got a question for you then.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
What's your name and address?
John Davis, four oh three Glancy Street, Swansboro, North Carolina, two eight five eight four.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, John, you got that paper I asked you for? Got that paper I asked you for, that copy of that slide, so permission?
Uh, I will get that for you, what I can do is bring it with me, but I can give it to John, let him make a copy of it, get it to all of you.
There you go.
I think that's absolutely, uh, basically what he's talking about is the school's, um, ten-year plan, and again, that's where, you know, this transparency and integration, all that comes together, so y'all can kinda see what they're thinking and what they're doing, it's public record, so you guys, in my view, y'all should definitely get a copy of it, absolutely.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thanks, John. All righty, Jeff, yeah, okay.
Um, I hope this, I hope that coming here today, that you gained some insight on some of the problems we face, but some of the opportunities we're looking at, too, and I would hope that also we could schedule some plans, either biannually or even quarterly, um, where you get to come in and talk to your constituents, and I think if we put this on a cycle, I think we'll encourage more, more of the community to show up.
Yep.
Um, so you can actually hear from the people that, uh, you most affect.
Sure. And, you, you have anything? So, yeah, I just wanted to thank you, we did, and we're a little remiss in not talking about this, I don't wanna open up another can of worms, but natural gas pipeline. Uh.
We already talked about that one.
When I saw him, I, so anyway, enough said, just keep that on top of mind, if you would, please, um, and thank you so much for taking your time to come down and, and talk with us, and, uh, like John said, it's the first time anybody, you were here and, and for what, seven, eight years as mayor, and no one ever came down and, and discussed anything like this, we said it's nice that you're reaching out, and thank you so much. We, we wish you well, uh, just keep in mind, roads, sidewalks, natural gas, schools.
And EOC money, leave it alone.
Yeah, so anyway, thank you so much. Uh, with that, if nobody has anything else to say, can I get a motion to close? A second? Can you discuss? None being had, the meeting is closed. Yep. It's. Paper's gone. Um. We'll just.